True patriot love in all my sons come and with glowing hearts we see thee rise, not true nor strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee, God keeper man, glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Record of attendance. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? And you can certainly declare when the item comes up. Approval of agenda, additions or deletions. Go ahead, deputy.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to, under additions, put NSFM.
NSFM is thirteen A. I'm gonna put municipal awareness week B. Just a quick update in, um, minimum housing. See, anything else under additions? Moved by deputy, seconded by councillor Barry. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Approval of minutes. Public hearing October the tenth. Moved and seconded. Rediscussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town council, October the tenth. Councillor Barry, Deputy Mayor. Discussion? Go ahead, councillor.
I just got a question, perhaps of Lindsay mostly. Sometimes when motions are made by the two councillor Barry's, there's no ID. I think we should be putting Dawn and ask for Steve.
You okay with that?
I mean, when we look at the minutes, in the next generation, they're gonna wonder if we aired somehow. It wouldn't look good.
And I think in the minutes, you do put. Yeah. Good?
Question.
Questions called. All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried. Town council, October tenth, in camera. Moved by deputy, councillor Dawn. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, October twenty-third. Moved by deputy, seconded by councillor Steve. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, October twenty-third, in camera. Moved and seconded. What discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Financial statements, Grant Thornton. Welcome. It's all yours. So, so very, I know you have a question, very high level from me as well. In a nutshell, how is the town of Yarmouth doing? So, we're doing very well. And I throw it out there because, um, God love the province and their financial indicators, which need to be thrown in the, um... Yes. And sometimes when, you know, the public sees a financial indicator for us, we have a red because we're, we are, as Jeff always says, because we fund our, you know, depreciation and we do all the right things, but everybody else may not, so it looks like something other than what it is. So, the town is doing very, very well financially. That's what I thought. Yeah. Yeah. Perfect. Good staff. Thank you. Go ahead, deputy.
Yeah, and I think Gloria, we spent some time discussing this earlier, but you said that interest accumulated is not budgeted for. Okay. And the other one was maybe to Jeff is the long-term debt, um, at one point three, one point three six 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 seven. I think we've had this discussion almost, almost every year, Jeff, about, uh, it doesn't pay us to accelerate the payments. There's a penalty, I think, at the end?
Go ahead.
So, your worship, we, uh, when we do take on debt, we're required to take that debt through the municipal finance corporation. The municipal finance corporation goes to the market, uh, and sells provincial bonds. So, we, we buy into a scheduled debt program. So, people take out those bonds and they expect their returns, uh, on that schedule. If we, if we decided to retire debt early, uh, there would be penalties. So, it would cost us more to do that than to simply honor the contract that we have for that debt.
So, um, you could correct me if I'm mistaken, but before my time, and I've been here since two thousand eight, have we borrowed money from ourselves to do projects?
Uh, the only time that I can recall specifically that we, that we borrowed money from ourselves for a project...
Do we do something with the Pleasant Street project between the water utility and...
No, no, you're thinking of the, um, you're thinking of the water treatment plant. When that was done, that predates me. That was a few years before I started. Uh, the town bor-, or sorry, the water utility borrowed from the town's landfill reserve. We had a few million dollars there that was, that was sitting in our reserves, holding for the closure of the eventual closure of the landfill. And so, we loaned our own water utility, a significant amount of money with a small interest rate that was comparable. So, rather than pay interest to somebody else, we paid interest to ourselves.
Somebody else, we paid interest to ourselves. Okay. And the other question was almost in the same vein is, um... Like next, like we're gonna be doing a capital budget after the first of the year?
So, your worship, um, I believe our engineer and our director of finance have begun discussions on the capital budget along with our manager of public works and other staff. Uh, we are hopeful that we could have a capital budget maybe approved before Christmas.
Okay, good.
So, that means committee of the whole, you can look forward to seeing some information on the capital budget.
Yeah. And the only other question, and I'll be brief, your worship, because I know you have to get on the road, is how do we invest? I see we got seven point nine one one, seven point nine million dollars sitting there in cash and equivalents. How do we invest that? And it comes in, I know it comes in several different bank accounts under different entities.
Yeah. So, I would, I would suggest we defer that question to the director of finance, maybe at committee of the whole meeting. Uh, I don't know the details of, of our banking situation and how we, how we manage that cash.
Good, thank you. Any more questions for our auditors? Go ahead, councillor Wood.
So, page twenty-seven, you have the non-consolidated capital fund balance for the town of Yarmouth Water Utility. And in two thousand eighteen, it showed payable to the town capital reserve eighty thousand dollars. Is that perhaps what was taking place there? And that now shows that all of that has been repaid, all of the loan has been repaid as of the end of two thousand eighteen. So, we show an equity in the water utility of fifteen million eight hundred forty-five thousand five sixty-five after depreciation. And no ongoing debt. Thank you.
Anybody in the public, is this will be online? Jeff? Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead. Thanks, deputy. Okay.
Motion to accept the consolidated financial statement presented tonight, your worship.
Moved, seconded. Any further discussion? Sure. Whatever you're snuck in under the wire.
Thank you, worship, and, and obviously thank you to the auditors for, for their work and, and, you know, their, our finance staff, uh, work with them every year and, and, you know, enjoy, enjoy that process. Um, I wanted to mention, our director of finance is present, uh, and as was pointed out by the auditor, the, the surplus in the, in the, you know, less than one percent, you know, a twenty million dollar consolidated, uh, statement, I think we're seventeen million from the town alone. Our director of finance does, does an outstanding job in terms of bringing us in on, on target every year, advising us when we're, when we're, uh, getting a little loose in one area and giving us the opportunities and recommendations on how to keep on track. So, just wanted to, a little shout out to the director of finance for his good work.
Yes, thank you, Jerry. No matter how many times council says, "Do we have enough money?", you always find it. Thank you. Yep, so the motion's been made and it's been seconded to accept that. Yep. Questions called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Perfect. Thank you. Got a great staff. Thank you very much. Okay. Three ninety Main Street, appeal for encroachment. Wait a second now. Yeah, okay. So, we have an appeal, decision for encroachment on a Main Street entry step. That is in your package. And if you would like to speak, then, um, by all means, just give us your name and where you live and... That is in your package, and if you would like to speak, then by all means, just give us your name and where you live and... We, we may need you to either sit or, just because of the microphone, we can. Yeah, that's okay. Just haul the microphone closer to you so we can hear. It's all right, it's okay, it's, we just can't hear and it needs to be recorded. Thank you. Go ahead. Okay, so you, so you're not asking for anything? Oh. I don't know, like it's, takes time for things to get to council, things have to be looked at by staff, engineering, all those pieces. Do you have an answer for that? No, it's just, it's... Oh, yeah, that's easy, that's...
So your worship, if, if the question is around, around that, then I, I have an answer. So a couple of years ago, or a year and a half ago, a town engineer we had for 25 years retired. And we undertook the process of, of replacing him. And that took us a long time to find, to find qualified engineers to come and work, work within the town. We had an engineer, you may have met him, Mr. Hartland, who was with us for approximately a year. He left the town. We have DiMario Dunkley, who's been with us now for close to a year. And more recently, the engineer you're speaking about is Mark Brophy. Mark recently retired from the federal civil service and immediately transferred into this role. But while he was transitioning, he was still working four days a week for the federal government and couldn't be here. So we kept, we had him working for us one day a week as, as a lead up to his now full-time role. So the answer to your question of why was he only here one day a week? We were lucky he was here at all. A lot of people would have said, "I'm not available until November to start my position."
Good. Thank you. Oh, okay, so... Thank you very much. Okay, Land Use Bylaw Amendment, re-enhancing working waterfront. So the second reading to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to protect and enhance the working waterfront is outlined in the planner's report. So we've had the public hearing, we can, we can choose, motion to approve. We did have some concerns, I know I jotted them down and took a peek at where they fit. So what is the wish of council here? Well, that's, you have to have a motion and a second or... Go ahead, sorry, Councilor Wood, you were on. Okay, go ahead.
So your worship, my move to amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to protect and enhance the working waterfront is outlined in our planner's report.
Okay. Seconded. Okay, discussion. Go ahead, Councilor Wood.
So your worship, earlier we heard concerns about condo developments. And frankly, think that if the policy document had been available to the public, they would have been pleased to hear that the old bylaw provided for units up to a maximum of eight u- we could have up to eight units per lot. And that's been deleted, along with a number of other things. My concern though is with...
That, this is available, by the way. This was online.
Well, I don't understand that, but I'm not sure everybody gets to dig it out. So then my concern is this, that in the list of... So what they're doing is converting this from an as-of right to build the various, or to perform, to occupy and do things like light service shops, personal service shops, internet hall. To requirement that they use a development permit to put some control over what goes there. But they use pretty much the same list of uses, and I have concern with this. For instance, the new bylaw says...
What page are you on there?
Well, I'm, I'm at the bottom of page three, 13.
Gotcha.
I'm actually, and, and, so that goes over to, so... And, yeah, to move ahead to page five.
Okay.
And you'll see that the following and similar uses normally associated with the downtown area will be permitted by development agreement. I'm concerned that, and, and here's, here's the whole list of uses, all of which are traditionally in the downtown area. We have a downtown that developers are trying to develop and occupy. You don't have to be anything more than a casual observer to know that there's plenty of space in our downtown at the moment for that kind of, those kind of uses. And I'm afraid that this all, it still leaves far too much opportunity to go down there. It competes with the downtown more. So I'll come, come right to the point. So, I mean, they're talking restaurants, taverns, lounges, cabarets, places of entertainment, recreation, fitness and assembly, indoor and outdoor parking lots, parking structures, light service shop versus... It's, everything's the gamut. That's what I'm reading here, top page five, 13. All right, then it says, "These uses proposed to proceed by development agreement must demonstrate that the use would not negatively impact on an existing water-dependent use." Why don't you say water-dependent use or downtown use, or however you want to say it? Because otherwise, it's a direct, it authorizes by development agreement a whole host of uses that would negatively affect the... They're worried about affecting water-dependent uses, which is an important word. They're not worried about mainstream businesses in this thing. It should be fixed that way, I think. Those are my concerns. The only other one I have, on the same page, they're leaving in the existing bulk petroleum. Well, I don't think, most of us would think that the existing bulk petroleum plant on Water Street should be out of there, if it'd be got out of there. One way to get it out of there is to make it a non-performing use by leaving it out of the bylaw and allowing it to die its natural death over time when it becomes unusable for the current occupation.
So right now it's just grandfathered, what you're saying?
It would be grandfathered, if we, if you put it in, it's not grandfathered. It's a, it, it's not a development agreement concept, right? They take, "This zone shall include the following and similar types of uses as-of right." And they deleted all uses permitted in the general industrial M1 zones excluding bulk petroleum storage facilities and leaves in existing bulk petroleum storage facilities.
But it does say specifically existing.
Yep, well, you leave it there as a non-perform, you, you don't leave it in the, you don't leave it in plan, I don't think.
Jeff, go ahead. You don't have to turn it off yet, if you want it, just wait till the...
Yeah, so I was just going to address the, the first concern, which was with the WCI 5 zone, the zone immediately opposite what we call downtown on the east side of Water Street versus the west side. So if you, if you scroll down to, or flip over to page seven of 13, you'll see that all of those uses that are referenced in, in that early paragraph are already there and they're being struck out as, as-of right. And now they'll be able to be, able to occur on the west side of Water Street by development agreement.
On the west side or the east?
On the west side, by development agreement as opposed to as-of right. And so that will require them to satisfy, satisfy us that they're not displacing a water-dependent use and, and those other criteria. So it's actually making it a little more difficult for, for those uses to creep over to the, to the west side of Water Street.
What I'm trying to say is that frankly, I wonder why you're using, leaving all that many uses in any, in any of that area, which conflict with the downtown? That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I mean, that's for you guys, I, I just have a concern about it. We just had a developer here with a problem, trying to develop a building that's been on the market for fifteen years, for example.
It's, it's a hard-
This doesn't make it any easier for them, I'll tell you that.
No, it doesn't, and it's a hard one because I, I think everybody knows that development on a waterfront is something that draws people, it draws businesses. Like the opportunity there is, is off the charts.
It is?
Then you throw, yeah, well, it is, it's, it's-
The only new business they had down there is a boat job, and I know it. It took them two years, three years to get that through council.
I don't disagree with what you're saying with the downtown. Just, I'd hate to...
I, I have those concerns and I'm not sure, you know, I'm not okay, so.
Okay, who's next?
I'm okay. We had lots of discussion in our committee and I appreciate the comments. It's hard to make a planning document perfect.
Okay. Okay, is there anything, we good? Okay, question's called. All those in favor? Contrary? Yeah, thank you. New business, REMO agreement, CAO.
Your worship, this is a, an agreement to form a regional emergency management organization. Currently, we have an emergency management organization that has existed for, I'm going to say 20, 25 years in cooperation with the District of Yarmouth. Recently, we've been successful in, in agreeing as a county that we should have one emergency management organization. And so the agreement, if, if you approve it, would allow us to proceed with that. It will need to be followed by some bylaw amendments to our emergency management bylaw. But this would, would allow us to begin taking steps towards that. I can tell you that our emergency management staff are, are excited about the possibility of coordinating and working together, as are our, our municipal staff in terms of not having to, to work separately and duplicate effort in, in what could be the most stressful of situations. So we circulated this last month and-
I can't hear you back there.
Oh, back where?
Back there, still can't hear the people in the back.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So it's a draft agreement to create a regional emergency management organization for Yarmouth County. So currently, we just worked together with the district. We're now successful in having Argyle come together with us, basically reduce duplication of effort in, in time of emergency.
In our material for over a month, I've reviewed it, I think it's a positive step forward. It replaces an operation that worked effectively, but it'll work much more effectively being countywide. So it's my motion that we let the council of the town of Yarmouth enter into this agreement. This should be approved.
Moved and seconded, and I see the, the calculations.
It's a joint, the financing of this is, follows the model that we want, which is the-
Yeah, it makes us pay-
Uniform assessment, so...
The uniform assessment population in equal.
Yes.
Which means we pay 2% more.
Then...
Or paying 2% of somebody's. Okay.
Explain that to me.
I mean, at, if our, and we're gonna do it anyway, but...
Well, are we not?
Yeah, you can explain, I, it's right here, but, go ahead.
So I think what, what a worship is referring to is we talk often about a uniform assessment as, as the, the ideal cost-sharing formula because, you know, ultimately, all taxpayers share the same burden if you use uniform assessment. In this calculation, if you, if you look at uniform assessment alone, and then you look at this formula, this would cause us to pay about 2% more-
More than we would otherwise, under uni- pure, pure, yes, I understand. It's spelled out in here.
It, it is, it's very clear, just, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for it.
We're not paying 2% more than some other people.
We're paying 2% more and they're paying 2% less. So, what's that?
It gets revisited, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm not gonna argue with it, I'm just saying it's, it's the, the town taxpayers are paying more than our uniform assessment of population.
Yeah, but they're not paying, don't leave, don't leave it, we've got enough trouble fighting with our-
Yeah, I, I understand that.
We're not paying 2% more than other participants in the program, are we? We're paying 2% more than uniform assessment, but it's not a pure thing.
Yes.
So how much is that?
So I would guess that the core budget for, because we haven't done it yet, the core budget for a combined EMO might be in the area of $50,000 to $70,000.
$10,000.
Yep, I think it's been moved and seconded. Yeah, all, sorry, what were you gonna say?
I just had a question, maybe of Greg, I'm not sure. But I'm not sure if I understand section 41, identification. Each party shall identify its representatives from any liability that may arise as a result of that member acting as a member of REMO. Naive on that one. What's an example, what could...
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. We need those, uh, kind of clauses and more, more of our, uh.
No, if one of us screw up, we have to pay, not the other two. If one of us or our member on the board, uh, causes some kind of a loss somehow or another, then we have to pay that, not them, not the other two members. However, if one of theirs messes up, they have to pay.
Yeah.
How's that for ordinary language?
Thank you. Okay, called the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Thank you. R F D fifty-nine Water Street demolition. C A O?
So your worship, uh, fifty-nine Water Street, uh, for those who, just to help you orient yourself, is a vacant warehouse almost exactly opposite the ferry terminal. So you may.
Yarmouth Woodward.
Um, not sure. I don't know by that name.
She Yarmouth Woodward.
It's, it's.
Concrete block building with a caved-in roof?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that's right. Caved-in roof. That's the key, key element. So the roof caved in and a, uh, an order was issued by our administrator of our Dangerous and Uncanny, uh, bylaw. And we had some hope that there would be some, some action on that. The action did not occur. We are approaching the winter season. Uh, no work has been done to, uh, stabilize the situation or improve it. There's concern that, uh, when water gets into the, the block walls, it freezes. That could cause, uh, uh, further failure of the building. The administrator, um, is present and his recommendation is that we issue an order that could result in the demolition of the building if the order is not, uh, not complied with. The requirements of the act are if such an order is to be issued, that the building owners need to be notified, uh, at least seven days ahead. They have been so notified. Uh, they are, have a right to be present before council tonight and to provide their case of why perhaps that order should not be issued. You can hear, you should hear them if they are present and then make a decision whether or not you're comfortable proceeding to issue the order for which demolition of the building may be a, a result.
Okay. So I have a question. It says financial cost of demolition. Who pays that?
Uh, we do. And, uh, the cost is, is put against the property as a, as a lien.
Go ahead, deputy.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that council approve the recommendation from staff for the demolition of the building at fifty-nine Water Street. As you can see, your worship, even though we have to, uh, incur the cost of demolition, you can see the significant work that we are doing, uh, at the ferry terminal itself. And not only at the ferry terminal, the significant investment that Rods have put into their building at the colony. And, um, if it's not redeemed or not, if it's put against the taxes and not redeemed, um, we have to clean up that site. Could be some, uh, alternative parking site down there for either the terminal or the Rods property itself, your worship.
Good, thank you. So moved and seconded. There's nobody here from, the, the owners aren't here. Okay. They're not. Yep, go ahead.
Maybe to Greg. So if the owner wants to stop the demolition, what, so we accept that tonight? What's the process, Jeff or Greg, for us to putting the wheels in motion for that? So if, so if the owner comes in and at the last minute says, I want to save the property, what, what is it? So if we pass the motion tonight, where do we stand?
Sorry, I think the notice goes to the owner and then they have seven days to, to appeal it.
Yeah, it says homeowner has been sent the letter. Go ahead, C A O.
So the, the process, as we understood it, was we notified them seven days ahead of tonight.
Oh, that's.
That the order was to be considered. So before, before the order was made, they were notified seven days that they could be heard tonight, uh, prior to the decision being made. Once the decision is made, then the administrator will go ahead and issue the order. Uh, they, they can go ahead and fix the building. If they fail to fix it, I mean, they can tear it down themselves. If they fail to do that, then the administrator has to go ahead to, to take that action on behalf of the town.
Yeah, so they've already been given the notice then, yeah, this is the final decision.
Your worship, uh, deputy mayor, I think that at any stage in the process, the owner could come in and pay all costs and expenses of the town, stop the process and retake possession of the property, providing compliance. Am I not right, Greg?
If they comply.
Well, he doesn't, um.
I mean, we could accept.
The town's going to demolish it, but it's still.
Let's say the excavator's moving on the site and a guy shows up and says, listen, I'm prepared to tear this place down. We have some discretion.
Yeah, there's some discretion. I mean, he'd have to convince the town that it was imminent and not just that it was.
Financial ability, it wasn't just, uh, blow of smoke, is what they say.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the town certainly doesn't mandate a day that the town has to do it on or anything like that.
But we would have expenses up to that point if we, if we had, uh, hired an excavator and all that, made a contract and there was any financial implications, we would say, pay that and you got thirty days or something to tear it down. We could do that if we chose to.
Yeah, the town could reach some other agreement with them and, and of course, any costs incurred by the town would get added to the, to the tax bill. If not paid yet.
Questions, worship? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thank you. Uh, tender snow clearing removal twen, uh, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Go ahead, C A O.
Your worship, uh, there's a memo in the council package, uh, from the manager of Public Works. Tenders for snow clearing, ice control and snow removal for seven parking lots within the town, downtown area for nineteen, twenty winter season was advertised on the provincial procurement website, The Vanguard, and the town's website. Two responses were received from local contractors and the details are provided in the memo. After reviewing the tender pricing, equipment, availability and references, it is recommended that the contract be awarded to the lowest tenderer, Kay Anthony Landscaping and Snow Removal, as per the above pricing. Note, the contractor submitted a tender price of zero dollars for snow clearing only due to its infrequent application. It is uncon, and so he says, the, the manager says, it is uncommon to plow without salting as there is always residual snow and ice on a parking lot. The contractor acknowledges his obligation to perform this particular service, snow clearing only, whenever required at the tender price of zero dollars. Uh, this is for council's information and approval. And your worship, uh, I had a follow-up conversation with the manager of Public Works and, uh, you know, went through the details of this. He is very comfortable, uh, that the, the bidder understands his obligations in this bid. He's also very, um, confident that it's, it rarely would occur when we would have just snow removal or snow plowing only because the parking lots are not only a place where cars operate, but people walk in those parking lots. And we have had, the town has had, uh, situations in the past where people, we've had slip and fall accidents in those parking lots. And so we're, we're cautious and we tend to salt when we, when we plow.
Good. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Black History Month. Okay, so, uh, I think we are all aware of February designated provincially. Is it federally? But it's provincially for sure as Black History Month. Was requested to do a proclamation and we actually have a policy not to do proclamations. So we can't, because we've had some, this is, this would be a good one, but we've had some, uh, other wild ones. So basically, the motion that I would be asking someone to make is that the town acknowledge February as Black History Month and hold an event in keeping with the intention of such. Moved and seconded. Big Barry and Low Barry. Okay? Well, well, I meant, one's older, one's younger. Little Barry and Young Barry. Steve Barry and Don Barry. Okay, so?
Uh, your worship?
Yeah.
Just, so we're going to hold, maybe hold an event here at Town Hall, maybe? Or we're going to maybe figure that out?
Well, we'll figure it out. I'm thinking Town Hall and I'm having a conversation with somebody that has some, uh, some really good ideas.
Good ideas, okay.
And, you know, someone that knows and that has done this.
So if they need a budget, they can come, uh, figure that out for this month or next month and we'll be able to help them out. Okay.
Yeah, that'd be good.
And I think the other thing, uh, as a sidebar, uh, I think I saw on TV that the Viola Desmond bill was voted the best new piece of currency in the world.
Yes.
So that's pretty good, right? That's real, yeah, the world, that's big, right?
That's amazing. Yeah.
Jim's never seen this bill that's tall.
Yeah, Jim's never seen it. Okay, so question on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Um, reports, council advisory committees, committee of the whole, deputy mayor.
Thank you, your worship. I'll make a motion, uh, that the contract for bulk salt for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty season be awarded to the lowest tender, Elmsdale Landscaping Limited in the amount of thirty-nine oh five per ton plus H S T for total estimated contract price, uh, for the season of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars plus H S T.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Your worship, I make a motion that the utility supervisor vehicle be awarded, uh, to the lowest tender, Tuscan Ford, in the amount of five eighty-five twenty-six per month plus H S T.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Uh, your worship, this is a good one. I, I make a motion that council allow, and I don't think we even have to make a motion to this invite. Making a motion to allow the grade nine students to, uh, pres, oh, to present, okay, at the next committee of the whole.
What's the grade nine student?
They want to make a presentation?
Oh, right on. Awesome. Yes. Good stuff. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. I love that stuff.
Uh, your worship, I'll make a motion to have Peter Robinson give a presentation regarding a potential bike rally in Yarmouth at a future committee of the whole meeting.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Uh, your worship, I make a motion that council direct staff to work with the R C M P and the Trails Association to develop a policy for connector trails. Maybe, your worship, if you could say a word about that, please?
Council direct staff to work with R C M P and Trails.
About the connector part? What we're trying to do?
Yes, what we're trying to, yeah, what we're trying to do. So basically, um, I think you're aware we received a letter from the province saying, uh, they understand our interest in joining the trails for A T Vs and that, um, they would consider such after their pilot project, which ends in twenty twenty-one.
Better get at it pretty quick.
Well, here's the thing, yeah. So we need to have another conversation. I understand, I understand safety reasons, all those pieces. The, it's also our streets. We pay for them. Police them. We.
As you would say, your worship, this is the first part of that conversation then?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Where do we go from here?
I'm having a night.
Well, I think you, uh, you deserve a night after the week that you had, your worship.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Uh, your worship, I make a motion that council proceed with the next steps to establish a sister agreement with, uh, Ismiza. Ooh, I had it. Ismistan Armenia. Ooh.
Seconded. Any discussion?
I'll go with the little spelling that's right there, Lindsay, okay? Don't say, don't try to spell it off what I said phonetically. I don't know what you're getting.
Go ahead, councillor, wait.
Who's going to take that trip?
Jim's never, for a guy that's never left Yarmouth County, Jim wants to go out of the country.
Yeah, exactly.
So is it safe to go?
Well, first of all, we wouldn't go if it weren't safe. Secondly, I don't know that it even means a trip.
Jim's hoping, yeah. He's going to bring his car, put it in his pocket and drive it over there.
Exactly.
Uh, your worship, did we vote on that?
No.
Question, your worship?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Uh, your worship, I make a motion that council amend the committees of council policy section five point four C from ten A M to three thirty P M.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Citizen Advisory Committees, Planning Advisory Committee. Go ahead there, councillor McLeod.
Two, two items, your worship. Uh, I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider, and if deemed advisable, amend the strategy and the land use bylaw to permit the construction of additional residential units at sixty-five Parade Street and one ninety-nine Pleasant Street, as outlined in our planner's report. The recommendation is, all right, the recommendation is that residential units be permitted throughout the commercial industrial C I dash four zone in the area known as the Forest Street Industrial Park in combination with some of the permitted uses in the zone.
Okay, so moved by councillor Don, second by?
Jim.
Oh, okay, good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Second item, I move to initiate a comprehensive development planning process for the area zoned commercial holding, C dash H, south of Stars Road, as outlined in our planner's report, with the exception that the property located at twenty-six Burton Avenue be removed from the study area.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Heritage Committee, deputy mayor.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, from the Heritage Committee of October the twenty-third, twenty nineteen, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application, uh, for the certificate of appropriateness for thirty-one Willow Street as filed.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary?
Uh, your worship, I'll make a motion to approve the application to award two thousand dollars of the twenty nineteen Heritage Incentive Fund to twenty-one Collin Street.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried.
Uh, your worship, I'll make a motion to approve the application to award two thousand dollars of the twenty nineteen Heritage Incentive Funds to thirty-four Porter Street.
Moved and seconded. Yeah, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Thank you, deputy.
Thank you, your worship.
Reports from formation. I don't think there's anything on there. Questions for committee chairs? Anything? Everybody's good? Editions thirteen A, N S F M.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, we had a very successful week last week at the, uh, Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities. I think all the sessions were well-attended. Um, uh, it was a very, very, one of the best ones I've attended. Morale was high, uh, people in good spirits. Um, I think we did some really good work, but I think one of the, the most important things that happened last week, uh, your worship, is you were elected president of the Federation this year. So, um, you did a very good job at, at the chairing some of the sessions. Uh, your talk, uh, for accepting was inspirational and, um, very, very well-received, not only from, from all political parties. I know Mr. Houston was there, uh, Chucky Porter. We had numerous ministers there and, and Mr. Burl and everybody seemed to be enthused. So, uh, I'd like to, uh, send our congratulations on behalf of council to yourself. But most importantly, what happened is grandma.
Oh, gosh.
She's a grandmother. So I know you had a, a very, uh, you got elected to a, a great position, but you ho, hold a greater position with Haley. So, uh, congratulations, good luck with the grandbaby and. And I know you're gonna treat us very, very well at the table. So...
Absolutely.
Give a little view of, of what the Federation means to the province and maybe your workload and what it means to us as a council.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you. It's, it's been crazy. So I am a brand-new grandmother as of, um...
I'll make a motion and we send a letter of congratulations to the Honorary Citizen, Haley Moot, on her birthday, Don.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? We'll send, we'll send that out. So, so it's been a crazy week, a grandmother. And actually, a week ago, my son Brian went from Brian Moot to Dr. Brian Moot. He received his PhD. So it's just been crazy in the, in the household. But tremendously humbled to have been elected by my peers across the entire province, mayors, councillors, wardens, as the president of Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities. It's hard to put Deputy Mayor in a nutshell what it is, but basically, the Federation represents all municipalities, all 50 in the entire province. Every year, we elect a president, vice president, and board members. I would also like to say congratulations to Counselor Patty Durkey, who is our rural member. And actually, so she's from Modi. And from Argyle, their CAO, Ellen Muse, will be on the board as well as administration, the administration representative. So Yarmouth County is well represented. So basically, we work with the province on all those things for advocacy that municipalities are looking for, that are important to us. We send resolutions along. I just had some, some conversation early on with Minister Porter, who I'm really excited to work with. He's a great guy. He's forward-thinking. He, he just wants to get things done. So we're pretty excited about that, you know, things like municipal funding, finding different ways to find money for, for municipalities, EPR that we've also been talking about, roads issues, all the big-ticket items. And I, I would also say this, that I have sat at the NSFM table for the past, I want to say, five or six years. So council, I can't thank council enough for allowing me that time. I still, still don't slack on my duties here, that's for sure. And that certainly won't happen in the future. And a special thank you to my, my deputy Phil for filling in when I do need time. And the rest of council, who was just graciously, I get notes from everybody every day to wondering, is there something somebody can help with?
I call.
Yeah, you call. No, you don't text. You, you call. You call. So all those pieces. And also with the presidency comes a seat on the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, which is excellent. And I also have three...
But does it affect the ex-qualifying and, uh?
No, it does. Yep, it's a different seat. And I also have three committees. So at a national level, I'm on the Finance Committee, I'm on the Women's Parity Committee, and the Infrastructure Committee as well. So all big-ticket items. I guess the best way to say it, and I know council understands this, much better to have a seat at the tables where the big decisions are made than to let everybody else make the decisions for us. So you can, I think you know you'll be well represented. I'll keep everybody updated and, and just really humbled to, to be in this position. Actually, 48 years ago, my grandfather was in this position.
I think Counselor Clifford's grandfather was the second.
Was it your grandfather, Clifford? Because he was the, the second president.
Right, second, I don't know.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I don't have a third one.
Yes. So, let's say, let's have a celebration moment for that. Counselor Wood received his 35 years of service certificate. So congratulations.
Congratulations, Counselor.
Yeah. We're glad to keep you around for another 35.
You're welcome.
Okay.
And Jim's guaranteed another 35.
And Jim's absolutely, yeah.
And maybe tomorrow night, Your Worship, yourself and myself, we'll be representing the town of Yarmouth at the Nova Scotia Sports Hall of Fame induction. So Yarmouth's very own Jody Shelley, we inducted into the Sports Hall of Fame tomorrow night. So a very prestigious award for a locally grown and groomed boy that started his hockey career here and finished it with 13 years in the NHL. And he's a color commentator for the Columbus Blue Jackets. And he still comes, comes home, as he calls Yarmouth, home every summer to raise much-needed funds for the hospital foundation. And I think it'll be, it'll be something to see tomorrow night. And I think in 10 or 15 years, we'll be seeing, Jim will still be here and Cliff will still be on council. You'll still be mayor. Steve will be here. Don will still be here. I might not be. Wade will still be here. But we'll be seeing Ryan Graves getting the same...
Absolutely.
The same induction in 10 or 15 years. So...
Absolutely.
There's something to think about, that, that people from Yarmouth can make contributions in other parts of the province, across the country and internationally.
Pretty exciting, I have to say. Good stuff. So with that, the second edition, Municipal Awareness Week, just to put it on everybody's radar, that is next week. I think it always sneaks up on us. It really does because, because it's right after the NSFM conference. So our communications guy is sitting back there in the corner. So Mike, we're gonna sit down and, and maybe put out some videos and just for the public to understand better what we do and processes and pieces like that. Just have a little bit of fun with that for Municipal Awareness Week. Certainly, if anybody from on council is thinking anything at all about a message you'd like to get out, that's, you can tap into Mike and he'll video some stuff. I'll, I'll say this while I'm on the getting information out there. The 100 Meals will go again. I just have to finalize the schedule next week. This is the perfect, I'm just, this is the perfect example of how this council works, but how this community shows up. So I get a text from Counselor Steve and he says, "You know, you guys, the 100 Meals needs some money. Do you mind if I just post and, and get a couple of friends to show up?" And Steve, do you mind speaking to that? Because I just, there are no words for what you just did.
So I think, as you said, once again, it speaks to the giving in our community. But I just talked to Pam and, and asked how much money was needed. She said around $5,000 was needed just to run it for the 100 days. And I simply made a post on Facebook and said, I encouraged 100 people to give $50. And here we are, not even a week later, we're probably close to 6,000 committed. Had some great businesses around. I did not personally ask one person. It was one post and it was shared by everybody. And people got in contact with me or came to Town Hall. So I just think that speaks very well to where we are as a community. And the money has been pledged and we will be able to run the, the full 100 days for doing it. And like I said, I just, I, I couldn't be more happy. But I, I think it just, anytime there's a need, anytime there's a benefit, anytime there's anything, our people always step up. So very happy to help out and glad to be a part of things.
Thank you. Sincerely, thank you. Because I know it was one post, but, but it is a testimony to the, to the community and, and who we are. So that 100 Meals program, folks can still, they can still donate. If you donate $20 or more, you get a taxable receipt. So feel free to do that. Come into Town Hall or call Town Hall because we do have a, was it a PayPal, Mike?
PayPal.
You can do PayPal. You know, there's a, there's a, I think it's 100 Meals at townofyarmouth.com or something like that. And just find out what those details are and, and certainly continue to donate. We, we started off as a project that we thought was simply to feed people that needed a hot meal. So they could take that, whatever it is, $2 or $5 or $10, whatever you'd spend on a meal, and put that money towards electricity or medication or anything else, to help out that way. And we found out very quickly that it is much, much greater than that. So the number of seniors that have come to me and said, "You know what? I didn't go out in the winter at all. And now I call my friends and we show up to the dinners and the lunches, the breakfasts." The mental health piece is off the charts. We're talking to different organizations. And the simple fact that people can sit down and everybody is equal at a table. There's no hevs and hevs not, everybody's equal. So the mental health aspect, helping people, you know, that genuinely need a hot meal, putting extra money in their pockets, the social aspect for seniors and other folks. Whole families come out. We have people donating their time to play musical instruments, sing. I got a ukulele group that coughed, sent a note, and I said, "Look, we'll, we'll take whatever." So there's certainly lots more that people can do and, and we're gonna run it. So as soon as you sent that last note, so we got them, I'm like, "Okay, we're in." I just had to finalize that, the schedule. So thanks to the community for everything. Go ahead, Counselor Don.
I'd like to personally thank Steve because of the way that he does business is not the way of my method of doing stuff. I think his ideas of Facebooking, of getting the news out there, shows of the wave of the future that I still haven't caught up with. And some of our few counselors that are here are still not up to that kind of stuff at this moment. But this is, this is the way we're moving. And this is the way that, that young people and older people are moving in the direction of technology and getting the word out there quick and responding as quickly as it has done. So hats off to you and hats off to your methods that you are doing to getting our citizens quickly informed and getting them on board right away. So, thank you.
Yeah. You're absolutely right. Okay, so the, the last addition, I, I just slipped it at the last minute, is the minimum housing piece. And maybe, Mike, we can get a piece out next week when I'm, when I'm back. I don't, I don't know how to say this, but I'll, I'll just say it. Some people are living in apartments and homes that are not up to minimum housing standards. You, you shouldn't have drafts. You shouldn't have mice or the larger variety with longer tails. You shouldn't have any of that. Your home should be at least of minimum standards. So if you have an issue, and we will do the video to get it out to the public, Steve's way. We'll get you on that, Steve. If you have that issue, you can contact the, the town of Yarmouth and we have somebody that looks after minimum housing. It's getting cold and that's just, I have to say, it's just been on my heart for a little while now. As, as it gets cold, I guess I start to worry more, you know, people with drafts and snow coming in their cracks in their windows and things like that. So if you know somebody that needs help, direct them our way. And otherwise, folks will find us. Okay, so that's it for additions. Approval of invoices.
Moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, and date of next meeting. Oh, my goodness, it's December. What is it, 12th? Okay, December 12th. And motion, we're done in camera. Okay, so let's, yeah, let's go back in camera. Motion on camera. Okay, thank you. All right, we're good. Thanks, folks.